I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, we have Andy Gottlieb here with the Waste Water Collaborative. And George Whitefellow. Is there some public comment?
No.
No, okay.
There's the up.
Oh, good. Okay, so, we have...
This is our audience.
This is our audience. Okay. Is it a little cool in here?
We'll stay away from it.
Okay. I just thought it was kind of windy. But anyway...
It's windy, yes.
Not yet.
That's right. We might have to put this back on once it gets too much hot air. Okay, so, Andy, we had a steering committee, a review committee, review the collaborative. They gave their recommendations and they were out there and now we have heard some responses from the public. Several towns have written us. Do you want to take it from there?
What's my take? Well, I think what's happened is, you know, just to sort of review the bidding, the review committee's emphasis was on changing the way we talk about, as a county, the way we talk about managing water resources to a somewhat more place-based orientation so that it's time to focus our collective efforts around restoring and protecting important water resources because that's what resonates with people and that's what they associate with and that's what they will spend money on and energy and support. In order to do that, the review committee was recommending a change in the structure of the governing board from the current 17-member configuration, one point of each of the towns, two by you folks, two, and, disrespect our official member in the audience here, the two ex-official members, county health and Cape Cod Commission, to a seven-member entity that is focused more around those important places that we as a board have managed priority area for consideration by the county, supported by a 15-member advisory board representing the entire city, currently 15 towns in the Cape. So that's what the recommended structure from the committee was. And so that's gone out and had about three weeks of comment. Been a lot of discussion about it and you have gotten a letter from the collaborative chair and then probably half of them towns that I think are, you know, each have their own perspective to the issue, but I think sort of in summary, the theme is that the towns are concerned about losing their perceived power that comes from having a direct membership appointee on their behalf for the collaborative and are concerned that this constitutes some sort of sea change in the county's relationship with the towns on the issue of water protection. I think those conclusions and concerns are debatable. I think there is somewhat a lack of, or misperception, I guess, about what the actual power is, if you will, that they would be losing power, what those really are, given that under this board, you know, you're, I think, appropriately exercising your budgetary authority as commissioners and determining how the wastewater, water protection money is being spent on an annual basis and as, in your role as ultimate policymakers for the county and in your role as contracting agent. So, you know, I think there's this perception out there that's not really borne by the reality that collaborative votes a lot and that those votes are determinative of, you know, a specific direction that the county's taking. So I think there's a somewhat misfounded fear that there's this power, if you will, that's the way it's been described in the letters, not that I necessarily describe it, but this power would be lost and shifted to the commissioners. I don't, I think there's less there than meets the eye, to be honest with you. I think, you know, the review committee spent a lot of time talking about how to balance the need to engage the towns and to have the towns feel as a participant in having a stake in this process and the collaborative and the need to move beyond everybody at their own 15 solutions to seven problems. And, you know, the attempt by the review committee to sort of find a balance between that was to have that orientation around the places, the regional perspective, supported by the individual town perspective. And clearly, from those minority of communities that responded to the report, their view was that the committee for recommendations doesn't find that right balance.
May I ask a question? And I'm sure both of you can answer this, Bill and Andy. Wasn't the original intent of the collaborative, wasn't it to have its focus around watersheds to begin with and it sort of, I mean, I think over time, it drew back to its normal boundaries of towns, you know, each town, but in the beginning, was it either the blue ribbon?
I believe that initially, the thrust was to get engagement of the communities on the Waste Water Collaborative. The initial thrust was to get people behind the concept of participation in addressing the problems, although there was some understanding of the watershed implication, I believe that that's something that evolved out of the work that the collaborative begins to do. And one of the things that, you know, that's come out of at least the town's response to some of these things is that they feel that they're moving in that direction. I think that part of the concern that, you know, we've had and the committee had was that the implementation piece really wasn't moving as quickly as it should, especially since the SRF funding, which was a key part of the accomplishment of the collaborative, the availability of it, since that had not been accessed to the degree that, at least from the committee's point of view, expressed the sense of urgency that anything with a timeline has. Now, those of us who have tried to get communities to get behind projects like housing or private housing or other public works kinds of activities, understand that there are steps that are taken and there are delays. The argument that came back from the towns that responded was, in the case of Harwich, for example, they felt that there had been some progress in some inter-municipal activities and they took as an exception that we, that the collaborative, and I think this calls on the collaborative more than anything else, that the collaborative hadn't taken an inventory of where every town was with regard to the process. And I think that they all agree that, you know, all of the towns that responded, as I read that, while they appeared to be unanimous in their resistance to a change that would come under the county, they're all, they all tend to speak to the thought that more could have been done and they have, you know, and they have various reasons as to why it hadn't been done. I think this provides a great opportunity for us and I think the opportunity that comes out of that is that we're faced with these options and I think, you know, we always like to have options, is that we don't have to move on a reorganization as much as we have to move towards getting results with regard to this. The expression from the several towns that, you know, that responded indicate that they are interested in results. And so the next question in my mind is, how do we, you know, how do we convert their expressed interest in accomplishing results to finding out where every, you know, where all of the individual towns are because the ones that, you know, that they speak about in the report actually have some stuff going on. Okay, so how do, so the question becomes, in order to take the benefit of what the, you know, what the committee was saying, and I think the committee was saying, look, we've got to move forward in this, not in a more organized way, but in a way that is committed more to results. If, according to the letters and the things that are in here, say that some of the impediments have been removed, I think we need to find out from the collaborative as to where everybody is and where is everybody with regard to the, let's say, the inventory of what all towns are, you know, we got to the spectrum because I think that...
I find the comment telling in some respects in that. We invested a lot of time and money last fiscal year in construction of a tracking database that's available through the cakkeepers.org site that provides one link check on the status of wastewater planning in every one of the 15 towns. So we have that tool available to us. We have built it already and so it's very easy. I mean, off the top of my head, I mean, I can tell you something off the top of my head, but the point of it was to make it so that it didn't rely on the top of my head. There was a place you could go, get through one URL, figure out where everybody is. And so we have that. So it's pretty easy for any one of the member towns or any member of the public, which was the intent of setting up the tool, to go in and see exactly where each town is and their water, wastewater planning efforts. So we've got that ability.
And if I just can interrupt for a second? And of course, if the representatives had expressed and informed their boards of that site, they might have gone on and...
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, certainly, the blue ribbon committee and the business roundtable reports that gave rise to a lot of momentum, you guys that seized on the creative collaborative, had, for those that were engaged in it, an element of regionalization and watershed planning because you're not going to solve anything unless you do it on a watershed basis. Clearly, that wasn't...
Let me speak to that, Andy, because that's a very important point. When the business roundtable first brought this up, it was brought up on the basis of, we will not have the ability to control the activity if we, you know, if we let it go as it is because it will be, it will be run by the courts and not by, you know, not by the community. The board of commissioners that was in place at that time agreed with me that we needed to take some positive action to establish, let's say, a means by which we could control how that happened. Now, we've made some progress, but clearly, as the committee pointed out, we haven't made the progress that we hoped for.
Right. I think, you know, the other thing, people have tended to take this very personally.
I think that's true. It's like a reporter card.
Which is unfortunate because, you know, the dual charge you gave the committee was, look back and grade. And then, more importantly, what do you need going forward? And to not sort of get stuck wedded to a structure that assumes that what was necessary and viable politically five years ago is appropriate for the next five years.
Which is why in the ordinance it called for review in five years.
Right. And I think people have had a hard time separating the sort of evaluation of past performance with the structural discussion about what does the future require and how you best position yourself to respond to that. And maybe, you know, maybe, you know, we assume too much in assuming that people wouldn't take that what do you need going forward as inherent criticism of what they did, which really wasn't the point, you know? I think there's, there was a tone of, I don't know, "Bert's probably the better way to put it," that says, you know, we did a really good job. Want me to wrap it up? We did a really good job.
I must say.
You know, advancing certain things over the last four years. And to say that, you know, there's more left to be done shouldn't be taken as a condemnation of the achievements that were done over the previous four years. And I think there's been some difficulty in separating.
Okay. And part of my concern is that we've made an appointment of somebody who's supposed to represent us that led this charge against us, so I was very concerned about that. At the very least, I expected that our appointee would, you know, would, let's say, represent our, you know, represent the commissioners, you know, in this and not, you know, not take a position which, you know, which basically was leaking...
Well, I think that the more, I think that the more we've had time to talk to people about, you know, there's been the initial reaction and then the opportunity to sort of step back and say, all right, what's really underneath this, that we made some progress in that front.
Right. I think that's true.
You know, I think that's a good thing.
Well, when I was reviewing the report, I was pleased to see that they, that they actually looked out what the collaborative's done well, such as funding, you know, by securing the 0% through the Republican, that was a huge thing. Another thing they've done well is in the area of public education. And that's really important. I see that as such a huge issue, particularly in the towns, because townspeople don't really drift into the, into the fray on all of this until all of a sudden they think it's going to hit them in their pocket and then they become very much involved. Some of the things that they suggested the collaborative do is to work more toward finding shared solutions, particularly in terms of the watershed. Then when I reviewed all the letters from the communities that, who responded, the various boards of SLUTM, some of the things that seemed very clear in their response was that they are very focused on regional solutions, which I thought was a huge positive.
Right.
This isn't something we need to sell. They already see and understand that. And they also are working together on shared solutions for watersheds. So it may not be so much apparent, I think, overall. When you read what the SLUTM are saying is, in our town, we are working with, Province House working with Truro, or Harwich is working with Dennis and Brewster, Falmouth is working with Sandwich and Mashpee and Orne on these shared solutions. So there is a basis for regionalism occurring there and I think that's a very important thing. And if they, and what they see is the collaborative because they have their own representatives there, working with them, who obviously must be coming back to the communities and giving them some sort of support, information, whatever, that seems to be working. So I think as we read this and look at the recommendation, we need to see what's working well and what do we need to help it, what decisions do we need to make that might help it work better, not necessarily changing the structure. Maybe there are other ways to help it work better than doing that, but I think we need to have this discussion, we need to hear back from others. I see a huge thing is the elephant in all of this is the funding and how in the world have our communities ever been found the money to do this. Now, interestingly enough, in Falmouth, we looked at the tax rate because, at least in the town of Falmouth, we're like the 41st community in terms of local rates. I mean, we are really down there in the bottom. You could put 200 or 300 million project on the tax rate and it wouldn't even increase it by that much. People wouldn't even particularly notice that much of a difference because the tax rate is still up. So I think these funding, how we are going to fund these solutions is huge. And now, of course, we have Matt Patrick, who is out there pushing the alternatives, which is fine. I think everyone's looking at alternatives, but the idea is, well, let's use alternatives because they're cheaper to install, but yet we don't know, and George will probably be able to tell us this, if not now, sometime very soon, what is the cost of the maintenance for these? So that's, that's another issue because people are looking for less expensive solutions other than to sewer. But so I think, actually, in reading all of this, this is very good information and I think it's a great platform for us from which to deliberate in terms of where we need to go in the future and include the funding in that because that's a huge thing.
That comes up over and over again in, you know, in the discussion that I've had with, you know, with several people about how do we come up with a recommendation for creatively funding this in a way that people can get their arms around because that seems to be, as you say, is the most, is the most pressing issue. There seems to be general agreement that something needs to be done, something needs to be done on a continuing basis. The tool that, you know, that Andrew suggested, you know, exists is probably a way to come up with a priority in terms of where the collaborative should spend, you know, spend its effort because I think they're looking for, where is the best opportunity for success in moving forward? But at the same time, you know, the argument for 100% betterment versus, versus combination versus tax rate plays into the part about the community, Cape Cod, the value of Cape Cod is based upon the value of the whole community and not just an improvement that's made in a part of it because if one part of a community suffers, then the whole community suffers.
And does the county, can the county have a role in this? I mean, is there a way where the county can do something in the way of funding, whether it's accessing funds from elsewhere or what? I don't know. But I think we need to look at what we can do to help them respond to this law and where.
I mean, I think that, you know, there's, there's a couple of things at issue here. You know, it's teed up in a way right now, we've got a big food fight.
Right.
And, you know, maybe you come out on top of that food fight, maybe you don't. To some extent, it kind of distracts from the real issues at hand. I think that there, there are a handful of things coming back up. What's needed now, regardless of sort of the structural layout of the collaborative, is some people, whether it's the county, some towns, to lean on this issue and to not sort of wallow in the why I can't part of this. Yeah, it's expensive. We all know that. It's not going to get any cheaper longer you fuck around with it. So, you know, I think the county has a strong role in leading on this issue and sort of pushing place-based agenda, the regional solution agenda, the financing agenda and the how-to part of it. And I think collectively trying to bring some clarity to this whole issue of the role of alternatives in a strategic wastewater management plan and to have the discussion not devolve into, you know, the sewer people versus the alternatives people because it misses the point, I think. And it provides a great place for people who don't want to spend the money to run and hide. And so there's a need to lean on those four issues.
I agree.
And you can do that, you, the county can, we collectively can do that regardless of the structure of the collaborative. I would argue there's ways to structure the collaborative and have it function that would enhance the county's ability to do that, but I would say that, notwithstanding whatever the collaborative structure is, that shouldn't become an impediment to doing it. And so I think that really sort of focusing on, yeah, focusing on what the county can do to set the right tone and to push that issue and make resources available, notwithstanding whatever happens with the collaborative structure, is probably the most productive way of spending time. Secondly, I think you've got a lot of towns, you've got some towns that are working, you know, have forward credit, I mean, they're, you know, seriously pursuing the regional element of this for a lot of the right reasons. You've had some towns come out of the commentary process and saying, well, we're realists in regionalization too. That's great. It's the first I've heard it in some places. And I think that structuring what the county does, to hold those towns accountable for those statements, is also really important.
And you might think that we have, we have the, you know, something that we can build on, monument to, you know, to heaven if we help with the fire because that's what they said they wanted to do.
And so, you know, I really think, you know, going forward, you know, we can debate and discuss and I don't think, I don't think today's the right day to make a decision about pushing forward or not pushing forward on the recommendations of the review committee and moving at the next level, but there are some things that I think the county can, you know, this board can begin to put in place that, you know, really highlight the right issues that need to be focused on. And regardless of who sits on the governing board for the collaborative articulating your expectations very clearly about what the priorities are that you want them working on, funneling information back to the town and where you see budget dollars flowing as a result of those priorities are things that we can work on, you know, in a short order.
I think we need to put some, for lack of a better word, some sort of models together as to how we're going to approach this with the collaborative, you know, with the county taking the lead, involving, involving the towns, involving the towns on their individual plans as well as their shared plans with, you know, with neighboring communities. They have to have some kind of a model for how we're going to make this work.
Because I don't see anybody, with the possible exception of Chad, who's got a plan, has funded it and can afford it. You know, collectively, you know, there are people obviously that say it's too expensive, but the town's made sort of a collective decision that they've got a program and it fits within their, their reasonable tax rate assessment that works for that town and they're going in. But other than that, nobody else has figured it out.
Right.
Then the collaborative's charge is to come up with this model.
Well, well, you know, what I also hear the town saying is, you know, we don't want the county telling us how to do it, but at the same time, in the next breath, they're all saying, we don't know how to do this.
Right.
We haven't figured it out. So there's a, there's an inherent conflict in that, in those two statements. And, you know, I think, you know, the way to thread that needle is for the county to find ways to engage the town, to lead them through the kind of conversation. So the beginning's a conversation we had with you guys, with your boards a couple weeks ago, we said, you know, there's three or four ways to model it and look at it. We're not going to tell you what the right, which one of those to pick, but we can help you think through what the four ones are so that rather than sort of feel like you're just running down a blind alley and it's just, you know, I got a headache because I can't think about the numbers and they're too big and, you know, the capital doesn't have that many zeros, here's a way, here's three or four different ways to think about this thing. And then throw it back to the town and say, okay, you know, pick one.
If I can just say that, you know, in my reading of the report is that they were calling for the representation of the towns. They weren't eliminating that, but they were also adding a layer of, you know, when they said more professionals and some people spoke to that in their letters, particularly the chairman of the collaborative. I mean, I just looked at that other layer, like the executive committee that they recommended to be those people, to come from those professions, maybe financial backgrounds or municipal financial backgrounds and maybe engineering and how to implement, you know, how can you pay for it and how can you implement it? And, and I think, I thought that was a good idea, not whether we go exactly with that structure, but to have more of a professional opinion come in and help us as opposed to what we have now, which are the representatives of the towns and reporting where they are. I mean, having sat on this committee now a year, just about, you know, I haven't seen, there's a lot of discussion, but there's no decisions to go forward. It's kind of like reporting where we are and, and that's sort of it. So I think if we had, or if there was a body that focused on those issues, financing, implementation, the various forms that can be implemented, you can do sewer-ing and alternatives and your other outer areas, would be a very good thing.
I mean, because nobody's talking, anybody, because no one's talked about the county assuming operational responsibility for the conceptualization, financing and implementation of these projects.
Some people individually, you know...
And so, given that that's not really on the table, then, you know, you're still talking about the towns owning the problem. And nothing, in that context, nothing, I don't care what governing board structure you have, nothing that board is talking about and deciding drives what an individual town's doing.
Right.
And so, you know, it's really a question of, you know, what's... And so, you know, it's really a question of, you know, what's the right way to frame what needs to be done and help people from towns through that process.
The, I've always said, the board is selected and each town has to own that planning process. I mean, it really has to be theirs to make it work. But I want you to know, the whole purpose of you and Brian House and David DiLorenzo being there was to give people, not only the people who attended the meeting, but the whole television audience, an understanding from your level, the level of collaborative, Brian House, who was the creator of the science of the space, but one of the creators, and the state. And David manages the revolving fund, the 0% revolving fund. And I thought, how do you measure whether or not people really got it? Well, I want you to know, the woman who takes the minutes at the meeting said to me the following week, that was so wonderful and now I understand it all. So the whole idea is to replicate things like that so that people, the people who are going to have to foot the bill really are going to understand what the issues are and what the decision is going to be.
Our monthly meetings, our monthly meetings don't move that agenda. What moves that agenda is coming and talking to you guys.
That's right.
And, you know, I mean, we've gone to nutrient management group half a dozen times. We're now before your board. And there've been several other towns where we've had the opportunity to do that, perhaps with less acclaim and benefit, to think of a few, but we've spent some time in a number of towns. And that's really what the value that collectively the resource that the county has to bring bears and having a coherent approach to what we're doing, what Paul's doing, what George's doing, have it all fit together and then being able to go sit down with the boards and say, these pieces all lay together. We don't have answers for you, but we consult to tell to find the questions appropriately. That's where, you know, and that value happens regardless of structure. Now, structure can sometimes support that or not support that. And I think, you know, that's an issue that we need to continue to hammer out. So there's a lot.
I'm very concerned that, you know, that in putting energy into a, let's say, significant revision of structure that we would, because I remember when we started the collaborative, it took two full years of going around to sell the concept. And I don't want to take two full years and waste that out of the, you know, the SRF process. As much as I would believe that we, that it's the end, that we might be able to facilitate the process more quickly, I still have to believe that in the interim, we still have a responsibility to move forward. And I think that what we're talking about here is a solution-based mentality where there can be a selection among solutions that address the issue. There already seems to be an agreement that the watershed approach is one that today is an acceptable one. The next step is how do we mobilize the things that, you know, that went before the Falmouth Board so that more people are aware of the, what I would call the nuts and bolts and the responsibility and, let's say, opportunities that are there? And then use the collaborative, you know, in their, let's say, in their present structure to bring the towns in to, let's say, to live up to the, you know, to the things that they've said in their report.
Well, the other thing it doesn't is it accomplished the objective of also getting the board to take ownership with it. They can't just, you know, leave it up to somebody else. It's, you know, the executives of the town have to do something about it and make it work.
I think that's important.
I do too.
Going forward, I've been in Harwich like three times in the last week and the subject comes up quite a bit. And a lot of the regional efforts that they point to, they're really in two major areas. It's around Pleasant Bay and the towns of Eastham, Orleans, Chatham, Harwich and sometimes Brewster. And on the upper Cape, the four upper Cape towns that all have shared the base and have dealt with the base over the last 20 years and have more of a track record for regional stuff, a lot of that predates the collaborative. And so, but where I see some disconnect is with some of the debates that they've had on wastewater and Barnes, DeBarn, Orleans and Chatham. As we have the impossible people that are not saying, well, we didn't know 100% betterment was going to be such a big deal, which raises certain questions there, but they, the first question they ask is how did Chatham do it? Now, if we had a collaborative that was functioning the way that it should, the Chatham representative should be talking about the financial aspects of this and informing the Barnstable representative, who should be informing the decision makers in that town. So clearly there's a disconnect there. And as much as those, a lot of those regional efforts have progressed, there are several high-profile regional efforts that have gotten nowhere. And so there are, I think, people looking at the county for answers. They're looking for you to add value and they want you to be able to, a lot of the engineering firms that these municipal councils are using are actually driving the policy in these towns. And they would like somebody that could peer review some of this engineering data. They would like a place to be able to come to and ask these financial questions like, how did Chatham do it? And is there anything we can learn from them that we can use here? And they're coming to the county saying, are you going to be a financial partner with us? And for you to be a financial partner, you've got to understand, almost like the Education Reform Act, what that local effort is. You know, what are they going to put in? How are they going to manage that retail system that they're going to run there? How are they going to build that? And so there's an incredible amount of coordination there. I think the report sees that those questions need to be answered and it's not a personal critique of the 15 representatives on this collaborative. It is the need to evolve a structural unit that is more tactical and less strategic in nature in order to be able to answer these questions directly. So, I mean, I think that's what I took out of the report going forward, but on path point, you know, this was a big effort that Bill undertook to sell this to the communities. And I think it's worked where a lot of people were skeptical that it was going on. I think it's been fantastically successful, especially on the SRF side, which really, you know, Andy personally should take a lot of credit for. So there's been a lot of success there, but I think it's time to evolve to the point where we get boards of selectmen to do more than ownership and to participate in the process. And I think that disconnect between the Chatham-Barnstable financial thing, if you had decision makers at the table in the collaborative, even if it had to meet at night or less often, you would, we would, that's the level that we're at now. We've got to start making some of these financial decisions and these decisions about how we're going to cooperate with other communities. And the people that we've had here have been great on the technical side and they've been great at sharing their experiences and being this place where people can share ideas and bring them back. But until we have those boards of selectmen vested in the collaborative itself, we're going to find the challenges of the next five years, it's a long time, to be difficult to meet.
So what you're suggesting maybe is have the collaborative made up of a member of the board of selectmen, which would then have them very in tune and their responsibility would really be sharing it back to their other.
I think the report, I think that what happened, and I saw this in the collaborative, I think some of the people have taken a deep breath, they've read the report, and I think what was a structural critique was taken personally. And I think that they brushed aside the huge accomplishments that are beyond anyone's expectations of this county effort at regionalization on this issue. But I think we're looking at these challenges now. I think you need decision makers. I think when Bill went out and talked to the communities, there was a certain covenant the county made with the communities. And I think that the county selecting those individual representatives is probably not a good idea. You know, I think it's sort of a breach of that covenant. But could the county say that elected officials, boards of selectmen, town councilors had to be at the table in order to speak and have voice? I think that might be appropriate. You know, I think that might be an appropriate way to keep that covenant and bring those decision makers in. But clearly that report calls for a strategic approach and financial advice, the engineering advice and the planning advice, just as a place, a resource for people to come to. You know, nobody's talking about a county-wide operational unit at this point, just a place where they can get their questions answered. And some of these communities are only asking the questions. And it's not the fault of the individual collaborative members that are on there. I can tell you that, that is not the case. In a sense, if you're asking a strategic board like the collaborative to make tactical decisions, then you're asking, you know, two people that have a great deal of respect for Mark L's DPW director in Barnstable, George Aler, DPW director in Yarmouth. How are you going to put Mark L's in the position of telling George Aler, George, you shouldn't build a centralized system? I mean, we can't do that. I mean, that is a tactical decision. That's why you need this place-based approach and it needs to be a different structure. And we have county expertise that can be helpful there and there should be some elected representation on that sort of tactical board that can move in that direction and really not to direct the towns, not to tell the towns how to do this, but to give them, to fill the void of information that they don't have in order to make those decisions.
And if you had boards of selectmen, if you had members of the boards of selectmen, not only would they be getting that information firsthand, they would be then forming relationships among themselves at that table where if there is going to be work together, there's already been some sort of relationship other than, you know, at boards of selectmen association meetings. I mean, they're actually working together and banging out ideas against each other.
To the extent that municipal budgets are shrinking and they have structural deficits that they had before this economic downturn and the state budget is absolutely crippled in a way that I think we're going to look back five years from now and find that this is a transformational time for government. There's a void in the middle. And, you know, I think that's the county's role. And so, I mean, I think you've got to insert yourself in that process now and say, we're here to help. And so I would ask you, is there any other county board where you have decision makers, boards of selectmen that are part and parcel of this? So I think this is not only a framework to tackle the biggest capital project that the county is going to ever face probably. It's a roadmap to solving problems, any number of problems in the future. So I think it's very important that you sort of consider that.
The MPO has, you know, has elected representatives on it and they have the responsibility for making decisions on allocations. The RTA boards have, are supposed to have the chair of the selectmen and the president of the town council as members. And in my service, you know, on the RTA board is with the full power of making decisions on that board because all it's called an advisory board, they do have, but I think the point that, you know, Andrew's made is that on, you know, on the MPO and perhaps on the RTA is that they have money and they are, you know, and they basically are dealing with, you know, they're dealing with the allocation and providing a conduit, you know, for money. And that I've always felt in representing Harwich on the RTA board that I had the full support of the, you know, of the select board and I also had the responsibility of making sure that, you know, that the budget requirements and the audit part, you know, was taken care of. Now, having said that, we've gotten, we've gotten some progress, as you said. What we, what I think we need to do is agree that there's, what, how many solutions are we committing ourselves to? And then working back from that, taking a true Cartesian approach instead. Once we agree on the solutions that need to be made, how many paths are there to get there? Restructure certainly is, you know, is one of them where the onus and responsibility comes in the county. But with that comes the expectation that the county somehow will magically come up with the money for it. And if they don't magically come up with the money for it, they figure out a way to raise it, which means that the county now gets into something that was part of the covenant, which we would not be at the forefront of being the, of, say, of adding tax burden, you know, to the.
And as anyone's suggesting, it's a county-wide cap or revenue at this point. There are other ways. I think the county has been successful in getting money, the SRF is one of them, and can continue to be successful. But the, I mean, the problem is I think communities now are saying, we can't afford it, the county's got to help. Before you as board of commissioners can make a determination about those, you need a group that's going to give you tactical advice and not the strategic advice that you're going to get with the collaborative.
And part of your policy position on something like that may be, you know, unless your plan meets certain criteria, county's not bringing money to the table. If it's a go-it-alone, a building, a larger system that solves war quality problem less efficiently than doing something with my neighbors, if that's what you want to choose, then maybe you can finance that on your own.
Right.
You know, and that the, you know, they, you set certain bars for performance that the towns have to achieve in order to obtain the benefits of, that the county has to bring to the table.
And on the financing issue, the county could help in any number of stages upfront. There are a number of communities that don't have comprehensive wastewater management plans. I think there are potentially county funds available to help communities get those plans done. I don't think that's an unreasonable demand on the county. On the end, there's the SRF bill for those towns that are cap, ready to go, which have on the ground have capital projects. There are a host of towns that are in between and I think just informational discussions with them about how Chatham did it, how you might do it, what's your sort of general tax levy structure, what's your deficit, just informational in the middle. So I see, without talking about any sort of broad-based revenue, there are a number of ways where the county could be very helpful in helping communities determine and promote how they're going to pay for this.
If, you know, Chatham heard 10 years ago that they could be sued, that they were under pressure to get this done and they, to make it equitable, they, as far as my understanding of this, is that they went the route of everyone's going to be soured so that it's a distribution, an equal distribution of burden. I don't think that towns have to do that. I think that's what the collaborative was saying. You don't have to sewer everything and that's overbuilding and it's not going to be efficient. Where there are strategic points around the cave that can be soured and the rest can have better alternative systems put in. So I think that Chatham's example, although it's great on how they figured out how to pay for it, isn't the solution that every town wants to embrace, but they can embrace part of it.
But the process, the thought process is the important thing. It's not the specifics. And I mean, just by way of, you know, information on Chatham, you know, they, it's a nice indication that they made yesterday, they had also applied for USDA grant and have chosen to accept the USDA grant for the treatment plan.
I tell people with that, where I can invest.
And the United States Partner of Agriculture. They have chosen to accept the USDA grant for the wastewater treatment plan upgrade portions of the program and are not taking SRF money and stimulus money for that portion because USDA grant provides them apparently a 45, the equivalent of 45% grant and then low interest terms on the balance. So, you know, it's not to say that everybody can get that grant. It's not to say that everybody can finance the way Chatham. It's not to say that everybody will choose to implement a program in the scope of Chatham. But the thought process that Chatham went through, to think through what its needs are, what its options are, and then to choose something that met their particular needs is a path that every town can replicate. They'll end up, they will end up at a different place than Chatham. And I guess, I don't care about that. I think what we would care about is helping towns recognize the steps they need to follow, the questions they need to ask and the way they contemplate the relationship between the answers to those questions and choosing a path. That's the role that the county can play. Across the three.
The failure in, you know, I think the committee saw had not happened because at this point, I would have expected that we would have had a recommendation that had those steps in place and that since we already have the tool that tells us where the towns are, I think that establishing what the priority of effort is based upon the information we have and working towards a formula, a formula that, you know, suggests, let's say, options among solutions. If you do this, you know, if you want this, you must do that. I think that there's where the greatest contribution that the collaborative can make in the short term. And I think that might turn, you know, turn their view from being strategic to tactical because there's a need to operate within a timeline that the, you know, that the funding mechanisms that we're aware of, you know, are limiting us.
Well, I think there's a, you know, a sort of a moment, you know, each town, for whatever reason, needs to get to a point where they're ready to engage. You know, and you guys have found, you've engaged now. I think my sense of the board was there's enough, a bunch of things have happened. Your planning came to a point where they were able to crystallize some of the technical matters and the financial pieces have come together. So now your board is engaged both for the town solution and on a regional basis. Barnstable has begun to engage for a different set of reasons because, you know, the process they followed, so spit out projects that then jumped the line because of the Arrow money that was available and it was a painful process. And so they sort of engaged about what their funding policy is that is going to then drive the rest of the program. Is it the way they would have chosen to engage? Probably not. I don't think anybody found that particularly enjoyable experience. You know, Orleans is engaged for a variety of, a set of different reasons. I think what the moment in time we have now and perhaps the lasting benefit of the review committee report would be that sort of a recognition at county level and a number of these towns now that have been kind of quiet in this process so far, let's be honest about it. it, that now is the moment in time for all of them to engage.
Right.
And excuse me, what we can do to bring them to that point and then lead them from where they are now forward as a county is a more important set of questions than the steps for the board.
It's interesting to me that, you know, we received some comments from, you know, just a handful of towns, and they are the towns that are somewhat engaged. And all of these other towns, we don't hear from. And are they engaged? Are they really hearing from their representatives? I mean, clearly, some do report back very regularly and have dialogue with either their boards of selectmen or their planning, but are the others? And are they doing it as often as they should and are with the understanding that they should? So...
Well, that's one of the benefits of policy suggestion, that if somebody from board of selectmen is not table every month.
The table, they have to go.
They can come back and say, "Hey, guess what I just heard?"
Right.
Or, you know, so-and-so's doing something, you know, I've, you know, aware of circumstance where somebody, you know, went back to a board's issue and, you know, that was said, "Yeah, we haven't seen it in about a year."
Right. And in the sense of urgency, I've had citizens, you know, towns, you know, the people who are not, you know, right in the thick of it, approached me over the last few weeks and say, "The one thing that has to come out loud and clear is that not only is there an urgency because of the SRF funds, but there's the threat of lawsuit from the state and federal governments, and people are watching us and breathing down our neck, and it's going to be, you know, an added cost to deal with that as opposed, in addition to actually solving the problem." George, you're here and you're part of this, our solutions going forward or recommendations. Do you have anything you'd like to, any thoughts you'd...
I think it's just a tad bit inappropriate for me to comment on a structural issue because I haven't been involved in the process. But I will make a comment from a smaller point of view, looking at, looking at the inside. The commissioners originally built a house, meeting house. Everybody came together, they're locked in, of course, but they came together and they jet, they formed a group that whether they had perceived or real power, it was a medium by which the discussions began. And from that group, I believe that every one of them would concede that in those comprehensive wastewater management plans that went forward, there is a fingerprint of what happened in that group. And it's a very nice fingerprint. There were some who used some of the funding from the county to do some of the groundwater modeling issues. There's our efforts, which is in every single comprehensive wastewater management plan where people go, "We want it cheaper, we want it easier, we want to run alternatives." The county has positioned itself to offer the best information nationwide available, and it's in every one of their plans. And there's many examples of that, the toolbox piece of things. All of these don't, are they the big pounding, "Yeah, we're going forward and we're there"? No, but they're the blocks that are needed in every community. Why you don't hear from every community is not every community has their TMDLs or even close to having some of their TMDLs. And they're waiting and watching and saying, "Gee, what are we going to have to do here? We don't want to run forward too fast because we know what that does. It gets people all a flurry when they don't have to be, and then we have to pull back and say, 'Oh, well, we only have to do this or this.'" So, I guess if I had ever had a vote in it, I'd say the present structure has more advantage than you even know. And it has, the example I hear about, what did Chatham do? Well, if somebody in Barstow asked what did Chatham do, I don't think that speaks to a fundamental flaw in the way the collaborative was organized because that's been discussed a lot of times. It might reflect that that person who asked the question may not know which library to go to or which place to go to for the information. But the collaborative had summarized that information before, the toolbox series, a whole lot of that. So, I would merely say to somebody, I'd say, "Gee, I'm sorry you haven't been around a while, but here's a nice toolbox document you could read right here. This is how they began the process." So, you know, I hear a lot of the discussion, but I'd say, "What you formed in the meeting house has value beyond what is touch." You know, you can go and say, "Yeah, this is, this is advantage, I think, to change at this point where you have the towns engaged and everybody discussing wastewater." And you say, "Well, what's the advantage to just sitting around and discussing it?" A whole lot more than you know because information does transfer. And the county has done some phenomenal things through the guidance of that present structure. Now, could it be better? Yeah, it could be, but I don't think I'd be able to sit an inch near that. Every town's going to have donor. I heard you discuss the issue of selectmen, haven't told me. Yeah, they are going to have donor, and somebody's going to have to take that message. And I know there's at least four towns that have not been to the meetings with all, he didn't know right there, where people are pounding them for answers. They know it. Towns, one by one, their selectmen will come to know that they have to own it. I don't believe, but then again, I'm just an health director. I don't believe trying to bring them to the table at this point or sort of pushing them to the table will do a whole lot of good. They'll know when it hits them off the head. And it normally is going to hit off the head that's, "Wow, it's like we didn't found what that night. I thought that was a phenomenal presentation, perfectly timely, just when the selectmen had to hear it." Maybe they could have heard it six months ago, but everything wasn't crystal clear at that point. And now it's crystal clear.
Timing is...
It is because you bring glassy-eyed, forgive me, glassy-eyed selectmen to a meeting where they don't have really, they're not there, they're not brought to that point. No one's said, "Hey, you need this, here's your TMDL, here, let's go." You bring them to the table, I don't think you gain a whole lot there, other than, you know, hold a meeting where they go away and they still scratch their head. But at this time, Falmouth, Chatham, Orleans, those are the towns right there on the fray. And I think the county's playing a huge role in sending ambassadors out there for the, for the sort of, here's how to sort of move your way along. And then we're, I mean, I look for our county department sort of participation, we're there when they say, "It's cheaper to do it this way, it's cheaper to do it this way." We'd say, "No, here are the facts."
That's what's fact.
So, I think, and that particular structure that allowed us to do that, that was the collaborative. They came and supported what? The tracking system for the IA systems. We could not have supported it any other way. They said to the county, "Gee, we think you should support that." And that, to me, right now, for all the towns and people running around saying, "Alternatives are better," that is the single most thing that they've done to answer that question without having to go, like Suffolk County is doing right now, hiring some high-power consultant to go out and look for information on performance and costs and everything else. They're coming to us. They're saying, "What have you got? You guys paid to do so. I think you did a good thing."
I agree. I think that they have done a lot of good work and a lot of good things that come out of it because of that. But my concern is that we're hearing from the towns that are engaged and not the towns that aren't engaged and are not at that point. And yes, they might not have their TMDLs, but they know that they have to start the discussion and moving forward and by not being pressured are understanding firsthand what is at stake. We now are at eight years, looking at being able to access that funding, and there are lawsuits coming down their, breathing down their neck. Many of the towns don't really get that. They think it's going to be somebody else's town, if there's any lawsuit.
Well, the other thing, just to, you know, I think, briefly along with George had said, but also give you an example of the problem. And I'll leave the name of the town aside so I don't embarrass anybody. One conversation I had several months ago with the town manager about a funding issue sort of concluded with, so, what is that organization again? What's a collaborative?
Right.
Oh, I have a rep on? Who is that?
Right.
Okay. Town manager saying they have no idea who the collaborative was and no idea who their rep was.
Right.
So, some people are engaged and some people are not. And I think collectively, to pick up a policy, I think we're at a point in time that we'll look back on as, you know, a real opportunity when a lot of things changed. And I'm relatively impatient. I think you guys ought to be impatient.
Absolutely.
That, you know, there are opportunities, there's problems out there and there's opportunities to solve them in a more cost-effective manner that we can take advantage of now or will have done a great disservice to those towns that end up having something that they don't want to force down their throat at greater cost with less flexibility. And so, you know, I think, you know, it's a, I care less about the structure than the message. And I think the message ought to carry with it some urgency, create some opportunities for those that are able and willing and capable of taking advantage of it, makes it clear what the cost to people is who choose to sit it out. And, you know, we should work like hell to make things work in those towns that want to engage. Regardless of where they are, I don't think we should penalize the town for starting late, as long as they're willing to come to the table and have necessary discussions about, you know, understanding their problem, figuring out what the solutions are, how they're going to finance it, how they're going to work with their neighboring communities.
And be more...
Anybody's going to like to come to the table under those terms, we ought to make a lot available to them.
And be more aggressive in getting them to...
And I think it should be pointed out that in the case of Harwich, there is a selectman that represents the town on the board.
Dennis too.
Dennis as well. So, you've got, and Dennis is...
You've got those two towns, Maffey, I think that's it for selectmen.
We didn't hear from Maffey, but we did hear from Dennis and from Harwich, you know, in terms of the people that responded. And in both cases, they, you know, they speak to what, you know, what George is saying, which is that they found as a surprise that there was an opportunity for engagement. In the case, in the case of Harwich, there has been, as some of it has predated because Frank Sampson, who's been kind of the moving force in Harwich, was on the wick, you know, prior to the, you know, the collaborative starting up. So, there's a lot of good things. If we're, I think there's general agreement that the place-based concept is acceptable regardless of structure. The next step is, how do we, if, how do we, as a Board of Commissioners, how do we move to the point of this formulaic approach to financing? How do we move forward with regard to a, let's say, the solution-based mentality that, you know, would actually get some progress? Because we all know what the problem is, and the longer we, you know, the longer we, in my opinion, hold on to the problem, we're avoiding the responsibility we have to recommend solutions.
But I think we should put this back on another agenda. I agree. Because we don't have any more time. But I think that's the next step, is to put this back on the agenda again and take some deliberative steps toward being more aggressive in helping towns be part of this process.
As part of that, you know, as part of that profession at that time, is that I would ask that, you know, Andrew and Paul, perhaps, and George, you know, perhaps, you know, put your heads together for a list of, you know, solutions, both from a tactical point of view and from a strategic point of view, as far as things that would, you know, that would help us make a decision that would be, you know, that would be progressive with regard to implementation strategies that would be separate from, you know, let's say, separate from a reorganization or restructure of the collaborative itself.
Or even if there was some reorganization of it, how would that be impacted? I hear loud and clear they want representation, you know, and I think that that is an important component. But there are things that we can do with the body of that representation or, and/or bringing in more tactical committee, maybe made up of the commission and George and yourself and some people from the towns to help advise that group as well. What is your response to Bill's suggestion?
Fine, I think we can come up with, help come up with a set of, I think, policy and operational expectations that you would have with the collaborative regardless of its structure. And then I think, you know, you sort of, I think you're, completely, you're in liberty to say, "This is what we want this entity to focus on." And then, you know, at some point in the future, you can step back and see whether those expectations have been met and decide at that point if, you know, if it can be met, then great, under the current structure. If it can't be met, then I think that begs the issue again.
They're asking for leadership in this.
The towns are...
They're asking for some leadership, especially when it comes to the financial side. And yet, they want to be part of it. So, there is a balance there, and I think that we can achieve it without, you know, having this concept, you know, that was the upright in the beginning, that this was a county takeover and it's no such thing. It's really not a change of power at all. It's just, how could we be more helpful to expedite...
You've got people's attention.
How much time do you need in order to come back?
Um...
A month?
I don't think we need that long. Why don't we, why don't we do it?
Two weeks.
Well, let's, you know, I'll just, we'll figure it out, we'll talk more and get on your agenda shortly.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and I would just say in closing, I mean, I agree with George that this county has put millions of dollars into this effort over a long period of time. And so, the county's fingerprints are in moving this agenda forward and where we are because of the county's leadership on that. A lot of that effort predates the collaborative and the current structure itself, and we need to evolve because we're at a point now where people are choking on the numbers involved because...
I agree.
They're not being explained to them what it's going to cost over 20 to 30 years of buildup. They're not looking at other potential options and they're, they're just not doing that. The risk is that we're going to run into some serious political issues in these towns that relates to these choking on these big numbers. You're going to have people saying, "We don't need it, we question the science. We have a magic bullet that everybody can put a phone loop in their backyard, it's going to take all the nitrogen out."
Right.
And that's what, and I think we're well-equipped to deal with that, with the MEP, with the IA system, the evaluation system that George is running. But we need to get out there and help the towns deal with these issues because if we don't, you are going to seriously postpone this effort. And the bottom line is, we've got a problem in estuaries that we have to clean up because the environment is our economy. And we have to do it at the lowest possible cost to property taxpayers. And that's clear. I mean, that's, the challenge is no more simple or no greater than that. And so, we have to be able to do that. Now, can we do that within the existing structure potentially? I mean, to the extent that you may have more technical people on the, on the collaborative than decision-makers, maybe you could just bring the decision-makers to the collaborative, you could reestablish the technical advisory committee as part of that, doesn't, wouldn't have to change any necessarily in structures, do that. And then, there's nothing stopping you from putting together a tactical group of county, just county, that the commissioners would do without changing that, so that you would have three structures in place and we'd have decision-makers, you'd have some technical expertise from the towns, and you'd have more strategic thought that was centralized to your employees' base.
I think that that would be the basis of one of the suggestions that you made, you talking together. But also, you know, I was asked a question by, and I think I sent it along to you, about that Harvard graduate student that's doing the analysis of NCO. Question is, how important are estuaries, estuaries to us?
Yeah.
You know, that simple question perhaps is the one that should drive a lot of this, you know, as far as getting, you know, getting the, or getting the towns and the citizens of the town aware of what we're trying to do. How important are estuaries to us?
Well, what is the cost of not doing anything? And that came up at the, at the meeting that we had in, and with David DiLorenzo was very interested in that and said, "I want to help you come up with some of those figures." What is it going to cost the cave if we do nothing at all? And there is a way to get at that without spending a huge amount of time doing it. So, we should take advantage of that.
Before you leave, how long was the presentation that they made in Falmouth?
Hour, hour and 20 minutes. Well, something like that.
Corey.
It could have gone longer.
We have access now to a service called MyAccessTV where you can actually upload the, you know, the digital information and it would, it would be something that would be available, you know, over the web with people, you know, with cable. But if you could talk to your IT, whoever does your recording and talk to community TV, you can actually get some of that information transferred over and perhaps that could have some value. And perhaps at another point, we could, you know, put this group together, you know, that provides this information and just perhaps in a venue that might be the legal women voters or something like that, that, you know, to memorialize it, get it, you know, get it on this type of an access where more people could look at it and, you know, that that might help move this agenda forward.
But there's also that public participation piece of question, and it's really important. It's very important. All right.
We'll be back soon.
Good, thank you. Great. Well, you can leave or not leave, but Paul, you can't leave because you're next.
Okay. I'll be back, but I need to ask you a question.
Can I just, can you take a one minute? Okay, we're going to take a five, five-minute reset. Okay, we're going to take a five, five-minute reset.